This is to call the Tuesday, April 18, 2023 Board of Library Trustees Regular Meeting to Order at 6:30 PM. May we have a roll call?
Certainly. Trustee Cox is absent. Trustee Fishman here.
Trustee Nealon.
Here.
Trustee O'Keefe here. Trustee Riddle is absent. Trustee Summer.
Here.
And Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Thank you. And right behind it, you have the minutes from our March 21st, 2023 meeting. Is it possible to have a motion?
Go ahead.
There was just one error that I wanted to point out. It's a Scrivener's era, basically under Section 2, Review of Draft Minutes, in the listing of my name, my name is incorrect. It's written as O'Riddle instead of O'Keefe. So I'm just noting that for posterity. And if that would be amended, greatly appreciated.
Got it. We made that correction to the minutes that are to be signed this evening.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
So the motion then will be as corrected when you go to make the motion?
Yes, please.
Can we have a motion? I will move approval of the March 21st, 2023 Regular Board Meeting Minutes as corrected. Is there a second?
I second.
Can we have a roll call?
Certainly. Trustee Cox is absent. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe, yes. Trustee Riddle is absent. Trustee Summer?
I need to abstain.
And Trustee McDonald.
I need to abstain.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we will defer it to the next meeting because it didn't, the motion didn't pass due to not lack of a quorum. Thanks. Okay. At this time, it's the time for public comment. And we have meeting attendees who may have signed the visitor and public comment registration form. Is there anyone that wishes to address the Board of Trustees? Thank you. Okay. There are no presentations at this time, and so we will turn it over to Trustee Summer for the Financial Treasures Report.
Good evening. First, I want to highlight the continued increase in interest income. If you look at the rates for the CDs purchased in February of '23, they're now making over 4%. And as indicated in the notes, the interest and income from the prior year is remarkable, in my opinion. We're taking good advantage of the current market conditions and making our tax dollars work harder for us. Thank you. But at the same time, if you look at the list of CDs to the early 2024, specifically for the general fund, there's several which are earning 1.75% or less. And Director Austin and John talked about this, as did Director Austin and I, that those February CDs would lose all of their interest to date if we called them early. And the difference in the return, if reinvested at a better rate, would essentially be lost. So it's not worth it. Also to note, this would impact the intentionality of a bond ladder, which we have. So at this point, we'll hold on to these CDs as is, at least until we've hired a new accountant and reevaluate it at that time. To highlight some of the items that are close to the total budget, ground maintenance is higher than expected of the 75% due to the purchase of the snowblower attachment from a prior period. One thing to note, my calculations of the total general fund and special reserve fund balances continue to differ from those of the accounting consultant. Now, we talked about it, and they, total balances agree, but I believe there's some misclassifications in QuickBooks. So when the year end is completed and the audit's been done, we'll make sure that QuickBooks, particularly with whether we have a new accountant or the consultant, that everything is in line, so that those numbers will agree. Lastly, just a couple of checks. There's a breakdown. There's a larger check to Hill Mechanical. It includes $7,700 to a monthly HVAC contract. They replaced a cabinet heater motor. There's just a couple. It's comprised of four different things. I can tell you all what it is, but I looked at the detail. Same thing with Computer View. There's a quarterly LAN contract, local area network for $19,600, couple Office 2021 programs, I think that's programs, right, and an anti-virus renewal. Are there any other questions on any of the detail or the checks from anyone? All right. Does anyone have a motion?
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the bill and salaries check detail for March 2023 as presented?
I move approval of the bills and salaries check detail for March 2023 as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. Trustee O'Keefe has moved and Trustee Fishman has seconded the approval of the bills and salary check detail for 2023 as presented. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trustee Cox is absent. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe, yes. Trustee Riddle is absent. Trustee Summer?
Yes.
And Trustee McDonald?
At this time, we are into our action items. And the first action item is the review and approval of the Kinnellworth Public Library District Library Service Agreement, renewal for 2023, 2028. One of the biggest changes is that it's now going to a five-year period instead of a four-year period. So when the election comes, it's not being renewed or reviewed at the same time that you have new trustee. And do you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Certainly.
About the contract?
Sure. I will provide you an overview of where we're at with this agreement. So as you know, Wilmatt Public Library District, in coordination with Winnetka Northfield Public Library District, has had a library service agreement with the Kinnellworth Public Library District now for about 40 years. And this is a every-four-year renewal cycle. And as President McDonald said, it has historically been a four-year agreement. We were recognizing some challenges that could potentially be presented by that timeframe. So in an effort to get this trued up, we're going to take it off of the odd-year cycle and to have it land in an even year, so that any potential new trustees that may come on have an opportunity to have a period of study for at least a year before any decisions would be made related to this longstanding agreement. This cooperative agreement has really served all of our communities really well. Kinnellworth is a small community. They serve 25,000 residents, 2,500 residents to our 28,000. And as such, Kinnellworth Public Library District does not have a library facility, does not have library staff, collections, doesn't host their own programming. Really and truly, as we're going to be doing here this spring and looking at our efficiency review, Kinnellworth Public Library District is an example of a very efficient unit of local government with a great IGA. So what we're looking at here this evening is to continue this agreement. But in our study of this, we also recognized that in our efforts internally to look at parity and trying to provide equity to the services that we're providing, we also need to extend that look to all of our agreements. And one of the things that became immediately evident to Director Dombrowski of the Winnetka Northfield Public Library District and myself in looking at this contract that has largely been unchanged over its lifetime, is that there has gradually been a deviation from equity with relation to the budget and cost per capita. As it stands right now, as you can see in the table in this agreement right now, relative to our budgets and the population served, the cost per capita for our relative communities are actually a bit more than they are for Kinnellworth Public Library District. In fact, Kinnellworth is paying about 60% of what the residents of Winnetka Northfield are paying right now, which is a little bit lower than we are here in Wilmatt. This relates to the way that the contract has been phrased. The phrasing in the Library Service Agreement states that the budget, property tax, and contractual fees will increase annually as defined in the agreement in Sections 4B and 5B. And like I said, this has been largely unchanged for years, but it's been calculated factoring the annual rate of the Consumer Price Index. And in fact, it's phrased to say the lesser of CPI or the maximum allowed by Cook County Tax, which is subject to PTEL, which is the tax cap, and therefore would never go above 4.9%. In effect, you could you could say in this agreement that you want to make it 10%, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it would come back down to 4.9% because that's the maximum allowable under the tax cap in Cook County. So in an effort to get us towards parity, one of the changes that we made in the agreement this time, in addition to the timeframe of the agreement, was to update the language in Sections 4B and 5B to say, to simply remove the lesser of and to say that we are going to be increasing this to the maximum allowed, which is 4.9%. We know that it's going to take us some time to reach that parity that we're seeking. That said, this is a step that we can take in that direction. The alternative would be, so we're trying to phase inequity, but the alternative, I guess, would be a one-time action that we could take and compel Kinnellworth Public Library District to conduct a referendum, whereby they would then have a taxing rate that would be similar to that of these two districts that serve them. It is our estimation that such an action would likely fail. And it is not in our interest to see the discontinuation of services to our neighbors in the Kinnellworth community. So in an effort to continue to serve these 2,500 residents, we feel that this is perhaps the most equitable approach to take at this time. That is really the substantive changes that we've added to this agreement. I will say that Winnetka Northfield had their board meeting last night, where they presented the exact same documentation that you have before you this evening. And I spoke with Director Dombrowski this morning, and I learned that they elected to table that conversation and not to take action on this, as the Winnetka Northfield Board felt that this wasn't enough of an increase. Recognizing that we can't do more than the 4.9% without a referendum, I think that they felt that we need to get to parity much more quickly than as addressed in this agreement here. So I think it's a conversation for us to have here this evening to talk about what we think the approach should be to this. This is my recommendation as the administrator of the Kinnellworth Public Library District and in representation of our community here, with the goal of trying to continue our services. But we also recognize that this is not an equitable solution. So I think we need to discuss that here. Kinnellworth Public Library District will be resuming its regular business at their April 27 meeting next Thursday. And a representative from the Winnetka Northfield Library District is going to come to that meeting and explain the decision that they had to defer their action at last week's, or last night's meeting. We too could send a representative based upon how we respond here this evening. So I open this conversation to you now. Do you have any questions, comments?
How long would it take, looking at the 4.9% or the max, for them to reach parity? What would be the timeframe?
There's a number of factors that would that would lead to that. So what we're looking at here is budget. Now, our budgets, budgets and levies are very different. We're operating right now in deficit spending because we reduced our levy for a period of time. But our commitment continues to grow and our budget continues to grow. As I'm continuing to draft the budget right now for fiscal year 2324, I'm estimating that we're going to be raising the budget by about 5% at this point because we're largely building back from the pandemic. We're adding more programs. We have a lot of commitments we need to continue on with. The rate of inflation is having an impact on our contractual agreements, and we need to remain competitive in our personnel lines. So there are a number of factors that go into running the district that Kinnellworth Public Library District frankly doesn't have to worry about because all they're doing is managing a contract, whereas we're actually managing the operations here. So that's kind of the long answer, is that, you know, we're looking at about 5% here. So by making it 5, we actually haven't made a lot of progress in this particular fiscal year, if in fact that's the budget that we approve. I can't speak to Winnetka Northfield's plans at this point because I haven't seen their budget, but our budget has typically increased at about 4% to 5%. If we look at the history of CPI on this agreement, that's really where I think a lot of these challenges have been presented over time. There were, there was a year where CPI was 0.1%, and it averaged, you know, less than 3. So it's not really going to catch up very quickly, but it's a step that we can certainly take.
So are you saying, just so that I'm clear, that we will, regardless of what we do with our budget and our levy, theirs will go up 4.9% every year?
That's right.
So whether, say, we don't increase our levy and ours stays flat, their amount they'll pay will go up 4.9%?
That's right.
Okay. Which will still take them, even if we kept a flat budget? Like if we just said we earn, it still would take quite a?
In the life of this five-year agreement that we're looking at here right now, we're not going to make up that, say, 40% deficit that we're looking at here, no.
So the options, so what are our real options?
Well, to put it plainly, I guess there's three options that you can take. The first is we can recommend that we take some action, and the action would be what we're proposing here this evening with this language change, which is to go to the maximum of 4.9% rather than continuing to go at the CPI rate, which currently, obviously, is closer to 5% because it's an odd time. The second option would be to say, no, we're not going to do this, and we recommend that you take, we are going to compel you to take a one-time action to get to referendum in order to continue your services. The alternative to that, or kind of a sidebar relationship to that, is, or this is maybe the third option. I'll just describe it as a third option. If we go that route, they take the referendum. Referendums are expensive. There's a lot of legal action that's involved with that. They've got a little bit of a fund balance. They could play around with that and determine if that's really where they want to go. Say they choose to do that, they expend the money, and that could go one of two ways. Hopefully, the outcome being that we would reach parity and we would continue to serve that community through the contractual agreement. The third option would be to let this contract lapse and to say, Winnetka Northfield and Wilmatt Library are not going to continue on with this service, and residents of Kinnellworth now have the ability to choose to purchase a library card from their nearest public library. This is statutorily described in the Administrative Code as the closest, the nearest public library to your home in the community with the high school district that is situated in that community, which means that the only library that Kinnellworth Public Library District residents can get their, or the village of Kinnellworth residents could get their library card at, would be where the high school is geographically located, and that would be Winnetka. A little long-winded there, but that's just getting to that point. So Wilmatt, in effect, which right now serves 60% of the users in Kinnellworth and is responsible for 60% of that circulation, we would not be the home of those residents anymore. We would not benefit from the fees associated with that because those fee cards would then be administered through Winnetka. That said, with a Winnetka library card, those residents could still come to Wilmatt and still enjoy the services of Wilmatt Library without enjoying, without us enjoying the benefit of those costs.
Okay. So what happens if Winnetka doesn't approve this contract?
Well, that's certainly an option that Winnetka could go along with as well. I think it's important to note that the budget for Kinnellworth Public Library District on this document, as you can see, is $330,000. And then that is divided 60/40, or based upon the circulation, to the various districts. And we get a portion of that as the administrator, and we would continue as the administrator here. So Winnetka would lose a little bit of money in this process. Let's call it $150,000. They would just leave that on the table and say, you know what, we've got a $4 million budget. This isn't really a substantive amount to us. We're going to leave that on the table. Then it would be up, I guess, to Wilmatt to say, are we going to do this on our own? Are we going to contract directly with Kinnellworth Public Library District and be the sole source of that service? Which is an interesting option, considering the fact that if we were to let this all lapse, we would not be the home library of this district. So I think, you know, I would have to go back to our legal counsel and explore that a bit more to see what the potential impact of that scenario would be.
So if, say, Winnetka opted not to, and we did, would we get the whole $329,000?
That's effectively how that would work.
So we would get the benefit, and that people could continue to do the 64, they could go, we would be their home library?
Because we've managed that contract. It was, it used to alternate. But how long have we managed that contract direct, I mean, without going back?
At least, at least the last two cycles. And again, this one at the request of Winnetka, we would be the administrator again. But I do think the important point to keep track here is that this would still only kick the ball down the road. It doesn't address the parity issue that we're trying to get to.
When is their meeting? April 27th, you said?
Yeah, next Thursday.
But in reality, even if they don't, and we aren't the library, they're library trust, they still say they do go to Winnetka, they still can come here.
That's right.
Use all of our, so it's really a rock and a hard place.
Which, again, is why the document before you this evening represents a step in the direction that we can take without discontinuing the services.
Interesting. And bring in some revenue.
There's a reason why this agreement has likely gone forward the way that it has for 40 years to this point. But I think we're looking at it with, I think we're starting to see that we're getting away from, you know, what our resident taxpayers are paying for their services here than what Kinnellworth is able to take advantage of through this IGA.
Okay. So even if, I mean, one, so just, I say that again. So if Winnetka steps away, say, and we get it all, at least we'll get, if, best-case scenario, to me, that is, we would get the $329. They'd still, the parity's still there. It's just that we would be at least getting a bigger, it'd help defray our portion of what we, services we provide.
So to speak. To be clear, this budget is not just the library service agreement that goes to, this is the total budget for that district. So a portion of that fund goes to their administrative costs, which include legal fees, posting in the newspaper, some operational costs for their district.
I would have assumed those are hopefully small, though.
They're small.
Okay.
But, you know, if we're quoting, if we're quoting actual dollars, it's not totally $329 as stated, but a portion of that, the majority.
I was going to ask if, so they are not shy about having a referendum if they have to, or is that just not at the point?
Hasn't been on the table, but I kind of, I really doubt that that would be a successful
Most people, yeah, exactly.
Option.
But per the terms of the agreement, the sum would be $316,252.
That's right.
Right. And I think we're currently receiving $180,000.
It was about 56% in that last cycle, yeah. I didn't point out that detail as well. That's one of the idiosyncrasies about this, is how it is allocated to the two districts. Historically, it's been a little challenging to determine what the cycle is that we're calculating the circulation on based upon the way it was phrased. So we did update that language in the agreement as well to say for the calendar year circulation, because the board does take a break after its October meeting. That gives us a chance to go through that data through December. And then they resume their business in April, so by then we would have had the annual numbers. And for the budget, we would be able to propose that. So that's another little change in this contract.
Any other questions?
Just wait and see. So for tonight, we're just going to discuss it. I would assume we'll let to see what happens on the 27th before we would make a sort of, my?
I think we would need to approve it before Kinnellworth could approve it.
Yeah.
To make sure that we are in agreement with it before it goes to Kinnellworth's board.
As the two library districts who are servicing Kinnellworth, the order of business is that we must first agree to the terms. And then Kinnellworth would need to come along between the two districts and say, okay, this is what you say. This is what we're going to go along with. There's really not much negotiation to go on here. But what we need to do, because Winnetka has not officially taken their action, if we take our action tonight and make that recommendation to Kinnellworth, then we're letting them know that this is the way that we're wanting to move forward. Then Winnetka has the choice at their May meeting to go forward, or if they're having a meeting before then, to take that action. And then, so Kinnellworth would have been able to take action next Tuesday, or Thursday on this, but
But they will not be able to.
Now they will not be able to because of what Winnetka did last night.
And in the event, excuse me, in the event Winnetka chooses not to go forward with this agreement, and, but Kinnellworth does, we will amend this to eliminate Winnetka from this agreement, I would assume.
Yeah. And like I said, I think I will need to do a little bit more conversation with our council about that to determine what the impacts would be.
Gotcha.
When does Kinnellworth meet again after next week? Because they don't meet.
They don't meet in May. So their next meeting will be their, the meeting where we onboard their new trustees, which will be in June. And we have to reschedule their June meeting because it's typically the fourth Tuesday of the month, but we have to appoint our new officials by the 74th day after the election, which means that that meeting can be held no later than June 9. And we also have the Decennial Review Committee that needs to be convened as well before the end of June. So that will be conducted at that early June meeting as well. Tentatively, it looks like it's June 8.
Okay. So for, so for us, worst-case, I'll call it worst-case scenarios. We sign, Winnetka decides to sign, we go with the 4.9 every year. To me, I consider that's the worst case because we're still splitting the pot. Best-case scenario is, I guess, Winnetka opts not to, Kinnellworth signs, we get the pot, the whole, the portion, and we continue to be able to raise a 4.9.
And you have the other option, that Kinnellworth may not sign it.
And then they would no longer have
The services.
The services
And then that
Per this agreement.
And then they would go to Winnetka.
But we'd still have to But we'd still have to provide the services with getting, because they'd get them.
They got it from Winnetka, yeah.
But they basically, okay.
I do think it's an important point. It occurs to me that if Winnetka does not go forward with this at all, if they say, we're taking a break on this, I think the way that the statutes are written, I don't know that this intergovernmental agreement could actually continue. The way that I see it is, according to the Administrative Code, if, using the tax bill method for a non-resident to get their library card, they have to get their library card through that community where the local high school is geographically located. And therefore, I feel like we would actually be in conflict with the way, with the way the Administrative Code is created. I think that that action could effectively, if, if Winnetka pulls out altogether, that could very well be the dissolution of this LSA. And it could very well be a signal for the dissolution of KPLD. But that is, that is just my, my hunch at this moment. I would obviously need to have a bit more exploration of this.
Interesting. So the way, the way the code reads, if that goes away, that, Kenneworth, it's possible can't just get into agreement with us.
Yeah. It's entirely possible, because I don't, it just doesn't seem, if that's the way the code is written, how this, how this agreement could, could go forward.
Well, if not, communities could cherry pick whatever districts or whatever libraries they would like to enter into agreements with.
Shop around for the cheapest.
And I think if Ron Rogers were here right now, he would be able to tell us a bit of the history of this agreement, and how I do believe him telling a story to me once upon a time, that that was an idea that was floated, that Kenneworth had explored where it might be able to get services from. And in fact, anecdotally, that was one thing that was mentioned to me by the trustee that I spoke to from Kenneworth about this, who said, well, if this doesn't work out, I can just shop this around and see if another library wants to work with us. And I'm not sure if that actually could go forward. But we're not at that point right now, and I think this is all kind of hypothetical and not really part of what our discussion is. But, you know, I think these are the key points that we're looking at here. I think the fact of the matter is, we all need to acknowledge that there is inequity. We are trying to work towards it. We're trying to take action tonight that will keep this agreement in force. And it's true that we will not very quickly get to that parity with the solution, but it is a way to improve and take the most appropriate action that we can through this agreement, to, to take that, that forward. The alternative would, would be to send the message to them that, well, maybe you need to ask your taxpayers what they think about how they want to get their services. That could ultimately lead the community to come back hat in hand and say, well, actually, it's going to cost us a lot more money if we do this on our own. Maybe, maybe we do want to keep this agreement. We have pretty significant penetration in Kenneworth. A lot of cardholders in that community. We have identified that the majority of the households in that community do carry a library card. So this would be impactful to a good number of those residents.
Yeah, I was, my thought was, are they active card residents, cardholders?
Yeah. I mean, it is, it is a, it is a statistically significant circulation, but it, you know, for, it's a community of 2,500 residents, it's not as much as obviously our own circulation.
Okay. Thank you.
And certainly, it's so convenient, if you told, if that one option, as you said, they would shop around, that could be out in
Glenview.
Wheaton, or, you know, or somewhere far.
Yep.
But, I mean, I'm not crying, but for them, I'm just saying.
But it seems like the terms of the agreement are a good, positive step forward. It seems like it would continue the services for the residents of Kenneworth. So it seems as if it's a good thing, as long as there is agreement.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and Kenneworth may not agree to it. I mean, they may decide they don't want to increase it by 5% every year, 4.9.
But this is the easiest way to bring in a little closer to parity.
Yep. Or the first step.
Yeah. No referendums are winning. I would like to, is there any other discussion? I would like to move approval of the Kenneworth Public Library District Library Service Agreement renewal 2023 to 2028 as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by McDonald, trustee McDonald, and seconded by trustee Summer, to approve the Kenneworth Public Library District Library Service Agreement renewal for 2023 to 2028 as presented. Can we have a roll call?
Certainly. Trustee Cox is absent. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe? Yes. Trustee Riddle is absent. Trustee Summer?
Yes.
And trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Summer, do you want to go to the meeting next week, or do you want me to go with you, or?
I'll be on a bike trip in Portugal.
Okay.
So I have to decline. Thank you.
And trustee Fishman will be out also, so I will be joining.
Okay.
Otherwise, I would go for sure.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move to the strategic plan. And I'm going to let you talk about, this is based on what we had last spring, in terms of the staff and trustee meeting. It's based on two different surveys that were distributed, and you've had conversations with both your staff and your leadership team.
All right. So I want to give you a little background first. I prepared a bit of a statement to kind of give us some context to this, because I think it's important to memorialize that, because this is the first time that we're actually having our discussion with the document in front of us. So, as trustee McDonald said, the board and leadership team began the latest phase of the library strategic planning process back in March of 2022, and we're preparing the final steps of this project this spring. The past year's work has included two community surveys, compiled feedback from nearly 1,000 stakeholders, analysis of those survey results, comparative study of relevant industry and area benchmarks, and the subsequent drafting and discussion of dozens of applicable goals. After retaining consultants for the, for the prior long-range plans, the board and staff elected to conduct this process internally for this cycle, so this has all been done by the staff. Our goal was to create an aspirational, outcome-oriented plan that would grow with us over the next four years, and reflect a high level of overview of our thoughtful decisions to move the library forward. We started by reviewing the accomplishments of the immediate prior plan and the way we reported on the progress to those goals. We then took a step back to broadly look at our community demographics to better understand how our demographic data aligns with our portfolio of services. Much of what we currently know about our community remains true, though we've noted that by 2027, we're estimating that we'll be serving approximately 2% fewer children and 2% more older adults. So largely remaining the same. Our community is comprised of 28% youth, 22% adults, and 29% older adults. By race, we remain predominantly white, over 80%, with a growing Asian and mixed-race population. With this data in hand, we then conducted a SWOT analysis with additional attention to our current challenges, namely the space in our unique building. We tested our tolerance for growth, both, both actual and metaphorical. In particularly, we looked at the challenge of our existing spaces and our long-range goals to revitalize the first and lower levels, the only spaces that we haven't addressed with a renovation in the past 20-some years. We then reviewed industry trends and the planning of area and leading libraries. We noted that the overwhelming majority of library strategic plans these days are a single-page document, and we were determined to make our next plan's presentation more accessible and memorable as a result. This aspiration, though, currently appears unattainable while preserving the accessibility and coherence of the documents, so as you see what you've got this evening, is actually more of a four or five-page document again. We'll make it look pretty with some design, but right now, we're just looking at the text. So while not a single-page document, staff was able to more clearly present the plan's objectives by articulating and differentiating, differentiating the library's values from the goals, allowing for the creation of concise, broadly-stated goals in support of the draft updates to the mission, vision, and values. And those are brand-new for you this evening. The new plan structure provides six outcomes across three goal areas with 16 key priorities, and several specific initiatives for the first fiscal year of the plan. Going forward, our idea is that during the development, development phase for each subsequent fiscal year's budget, staff will reflect on the prior year's progress to those initiatives, and identify and recommend initiatives for the next year. So this gives us a little bit more opportunity to be fluid and create this plan on the fly. The resulting draft plan includes a range of goals and outcomes across these three key areas: a welcoming environment, a connected community, and a sustainable future. Staff has also articulated the following library values as guiding principles for the plan. At Wilmatt Public Library, we champion intellectual freedom, promote literacy and a lifelong love of reading, advance inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility, cultivate strong community connections, establish and maintain valued partnerships, promote stewardship of sustainable practices, curate vibrant collections and experiences, deliver specialized services and programming, continuously evaluate, adapt, and innovate, and act with courtesy, initiative, creativity, and flexibility. The draft plan took, took its current shape in early March and has been steadily refined in the weeks since. This past month, leadership team staff met to review the draft plan, reflect on our current needs, emerging trends, and to explore our operations and aspirations for the near future. Staff were introduced to the draft plan document via, via email, and had the opportunity to explore the plan with the director via two separate meetings, virtual and in person, to learn about the process, the big picture, and to see where their department's details fit within the broader goals. Individual trustees met with the director to explore the plan's progress. At our tonight's meeting, we're reviewing it for the first time with the public. And I suppose this is the moment where I can share kind of our, our plans for the next couple of weeks.
So were you able, you had talked to the park district, right? You had had some individual discussions.
Yes, and I'm, I'm having some individual conversations with some of my community partners, as well as through my leaders group in the community. So we're, we're continuing to have broader conversations. That said, we do want to ensure that the draft plan reflects the community's aspirations for the library, as the community hasn't heard from us, or had the opportunity to reflect since the surveys that we did last year. So we're going to be, we're planning to host two events to present the draft plan and collect feedback. And we have scheduled those for Monday, May 1st, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock here in the auditorium, and if we've got a large enough group, we can spread that out to the small meeting room next door. And then that following Saturday, May 6th, from 10:00 AM to 11:30 PM, we'll have the small meeting room where we can conduct the same analysis there. Following review of that, that feedback, and incorporation of any further updates to the documentation, we anticipate that we'll present the plan for official approval in May or June.
Self-choked up.
And that is the end of my little preamble.
And talk a little bit about what that process will be. One of the, I guess, concerns, or what I would like to get from the public is, is there anything that we're missing? Is it clear? And what does success look like, given those goal areas? And I know Trish is going to join me on the Friday, because we've got the big room. And, and in case a lot of people come, we will break up into groups of 10. They will have the plan, and then we will have one-on-one discussions. Prior to that, Director Austin will do like a 10-minute statistical overview of what the community is. Just as an overview, but it will be brief. But it will be in PowerPoint as opposed to speaking, so that they can visualize it and see what we're serving, what some of the library trends are, and how we got to this point based on their input.
Is that the Monday meeting you're talking about?
Both Monday and the Saturday.
Okay, yep.
Saturday, we only got the smaller room. But we don't know how many people will show up, based on prior experiences, and the notice will go out Friday about the meeting.
Via the email.
Right. And we'll post it on the website tomorrow.
And can you post them also notices in the elevator, as well as the...
Certainly.
Thank you.
Are you looking for us to be there, too?
Um, all are invited.
And we will put you to work. We'll give you, in the event, that depends on how many people show up, though. But I think groups of 10 will be good for discussion, and just, you can do it in the room, just round tables.
Yep.
After he does that, in terms of just... But also, I think in terms of what you all think about it is equally important. And I'd like to read, trustee Cox could not be here because she's at a conference, but she sent me an email in terms of the strategic plan, and this is what one of her thoughts were. "I'd like to see the use of the library's extensive data and statistics to create measurable short-term, 2023 to 2024, and midterm and long-term outcomes for each of the three goal areas. Maybe these just weren't included, or are still being determined. For example, the initiative under the goal of welcoming environment for, for preserve and enhance access to rare, to rare and unique local history resources, may have measurable short-term outcomes such as preserve..." Like, I think one of the things in terms of preserving unique history is that there will be Monday, I think, proposed in the budget to scan all the Wilmatt Life, so, as a deteriorate. So that would be an example of an outcome, in terms of to make it, to digitize all of past historical, given the interest in genealogy. And then, so she does a, she goes on to say about logic models in terms of long-term outcomes and big goals. And then she says, "Overall, the strategic plans, values, goal areas, priorities, initiatives seem to reflect the feedback from constituents." Well done. So what I'm curious is, in terms of what, and do you think another meeting is needed after we meet with them, to go in-depth in terms of the measurability? How will you know success is achieved? I mean, that's my, that's what I always ask. How do you know with, when success? Some things you can measure qualitative, other things you can measure quantitative. The sustainability, you can measure that. I mean, in terms of what we've been doing, in terms of preserve and energy and that kind of thing. But there's some more softer things that we can't measure. So I don't know if you want to think about it? And then we have a, set up a meeting to discuss it afterwards? Or if you think there needs to be additional discussion in terms of what some of your thoughts are? Because this is a time to share what your thoughts have been when you read through it.
So I guess I will add to, when we were going through this, and I mentioned this a moment ago, we looked at the reporting that we did on our progress to the strategic plan goals for this last cycle. And a lot of that was, was narrative feedback that, that we created. You know, we hosted this program, X number of people attended it, it speaks to the specific goal, et cetera. And we did that on a monthly and/or quarterly basis. And then we, we provided, at the end of the fiscal year, a, a big summary, probably 20, 30 pages, that summarized all the actions that we had taken that year related to those specific goals. The, the monthly report is really a way that you can kind of keep progress and tabs on this, and a lot of the actions that we're doing really speak to that. So it will probably be a distillation of, of a lot of that information. But I do think it's, I'm, I'm curious for you all, when you read those, those narrative summaries that we provided over the course of the last four years, is that the kind of information that you're looking for? Is that the kind of feedback that lets you know that we're making progress? Does that convey to you that we have been successful in meeting the objectives of those goals? Or do we need to provide more supportive language under each of these items to give you that?
Well, I'll give you an example, because one of the things is to promote literacy. We have the youth book club. Okay, I said, one of the things is to promote literacy. I mean, that's a big objective. We have the book club, the summer reading program.
And winter.
And winter, but I'm talking about the summer. The summer is the big one, in terms of measurement. I'm talking about how we measure, you know, because that's the whole summer thing, and what are some of the ways we might measure the impact of that program beyond how many books someone has read? Or if, if it's even possible, you know, in terms of that. So, I mean, those are some of my thoughts. And I think we've talked about it, and I think I asked, talked to you about it, we talked about it when you did your presentation. So those would be some of the questions that I think, some of the bigger programs that you could actually have a large enough sample size in terms of measuring that impact. That would be one example, that, just off the top of my head, that has been talked about.
I wonder if there's some areas that are harder to measure, like a welcoming environment. That would be more narrative. At some point, maybe we'd want to just set a little survey to our patrons and say, you know, what do you think? You know?
Or you look, look at those comments that just came in.
Comments, yeah.
Measuring that, in terms of just finding a way to tally it. I don't know.
And one of the initiatives that we have under connected community, the second initiative is to develop and implement a framework for collecting feedback about services and programs. So that's baked right into the, to the plan itself, right there. And if that is part of the way that we're going to measure suc- And if that is part of the way that we're going to measure success, then that is one of our key initiatives here for the first fiscal year of this plan, is to develop that framework, which will then help to support the way that we do the reporting for the rest of the plan.
That sounds good.
But, yeah, it's true. I think some of the, some of the outcomes would be really challenging to, you know, a longitudinal study of a preschooler today and their love of reading, it's going to take us a long time before they graduate from high school to really be able to say, was the summer reading program the thing that inspired them to have a lifelong love of reading and learning? We'd love to say that we're a part of that, but I think, how are we going to track that? Is there a methodology? And then I think there's other examples, obviously, that we could follow with that, too. The Public Library Association has put together a program over the course of the last, I think it's been about 10 years now, that they have a program called Project Outcome. I know that Wilmot Library looked at Project Outcome under the previous director's administration, studied that and determined that wasn't the right fit for us in terms of a program. But we could take a look at their framework and see if there's some applicable approaches to trying to document that, so that we can measure some of the more qualitative outcomes. Statistics, I think, I think it does bear note that when that previous strategic plan was drafted, we hadn't been nationally recognized for our statistical outputs. And in each of the years of that strategy, that last strategic plan, Wilmot Library was nationally recognized for all those output measures, specifically physical circulation, ebook circulation, program attendance, our door counts, our computer usage, Wi-Fi, all those statistical measures that Library Journal used, we were able to outperform a number of our peers and be one of the top 10 libraries in our budget category. And I think that's a salient point. And recognizing that accomplishment in working on this plan, a lot of the goals that we wrote were not statistically oriented, because we had already met so many of those benchmarks. Our goal now is to maintain where we're at, not to rest on those laurels, but to continue to grow, and to continue to evaluate, adapt, and innovate, and advance where we're at today. But we did accomplish that, and I think that's a point that we need to keep, keep in mind as well, that that's one of the reasons why this looks a little bit different, because, yeah, we're not trying to increase circulation by 3% or whatever, because we already have statistically high circulation per capita.
So I guess the questions that I would ask you to think about as trustees is, is there anything that's missing? And is there's anything unclear?
Strategic planning is not my strength. I'll start by prefacing that. Sustainable future is very broad. It's, for example, meet and anticipate future needs. I'm just looking at what, it seems so broad. Anticipate future needs of sustainability, financial documents, financial health. So for me, I look at this, I, it's very hard for me to know what that really means. Now, maybe someone who's really good at strategic planning would have a better... For me, it's so broad, preserve and promote the assets of the district. Those are, that one, actually, I can understand a little bit better. It's like maintaining the financial health of the library with its... But does anybody else? It seems extremely broad, but people who...
So I agree.
So these are, these are necessarily broad. That's the point. The initiatives and priorities that follow below are the specifics that gesture towards that. So the, really, you know, what do we mean by sustainable future? Those are the outcomes that we're, that we're driving towards. The previous plan did not have outcomes articulated in the plan.
Okay.
So we gave, this is kind of like, when we say sustainable future, what does that mean? Well, these are the things that we're talking about. We want to meet and anticipate future needs and preserve and promote the assets of the district. And then the priorities are ways that we're going to drive towards that. The priorities I'd like you to think of as, what do we do every day? What are, what are we, what are we trying to keep our finger on the pulse of? And then the initiatives are the very specific things that are projects that we're focusing on for each fiscal year. And as I said, structurally in this plan, we're looking to be more articulate about that at the beginning of each fiscal year, so that we are constantly in a state of evaluation, so that we're focusing specific initiatives for each fiscal year relative to the budget. And of course, when we're talking about the budget each year, we would be reviewing and approving these initiatives baked into the budget, when we go to approve that at, say, the June meeting. So we'll have a broader conversation about the impact of each of those initiatives when we're talking about the budget. So when Lisa pulled out specifically the one related to local history, she's right. There's a lot that's baked into that that talks about the budget. It's an expensive process to go through that, way more than I can explain on a bullet point in a, in a strategic plan. But the strategic plan is necessarily a broadly stated document, and there's going to be a lot, a lot of hidden bullet points within this.
Okay.
But here's one other question for sustainable future. When you say complete responsive space needs, what is the responsive? What do you mean by the responsive? As opposed to just complete a space needs assessment? What is a responsive? I don't, I don't know, I mean, that, that's just an example, in terms of, because if you just said, complete space needs assessment, to inform and establish priorities for service design and capital planning, I understand that. What is responsive? What is that? I'm just curious.
Okay, so we conducted two surveys last fall, and, well, last year. Last fall's related specifically to space. So we are responding to that, to that survey and the data that we collected from the public. We also did internal study with, with our staff. So we have data from the public and from the staff. Now we will hire a contractor, an architect, a specialist who knows libraries, who will look at libraries writ large that have done renovations, and knows kind of what the priorities are and what some of the initiatives are in the next 10, 15 years. And can then take all the ideas that we have collected from the public and the staff, looking at the pain points that we have for the existing building, and then they will create a responsive space needs assessment to all of those initiatives. And then we will then, as board and staff, be able to take appropriate action with our next renovation related to that space needs assessment.
So for it to be complete, if I'm explaining it to the public, I think what needs to be in there is complete responsive space needs assessment, to inform and assess, based on the research that's been done, to show that it's not coming out of the air. I'm just saying, if I'm Joe Blow Public saying, why, you know, you've just explained to me that you have done that extensive research, and to me, that makes it a little bit more, you know, I can see it a little bit better as to what you mean, as opposed to just reading it like that, that's all.
Okay. Well, and that's kind of, the word responsive was intended to add all that information in there, but again, this, the goal of this plan initially was to make it a one-page document. And as we found, as we started to wordsmith this, it was very hard to contain all of the aspirations that we have for the library into such a small document. But yeah, I mean, obviously, there's, there's going to be a lot more explanation that goes into this.
Yeah, and I think in terms of getting the public's feedback, that's going to be, to me, I can respond if it's a little bit more, that's all I'm saying.
I agree. And I would also invite you to take a look back at the, at the last plan, and to see the language that was written in that, and then compare the two, and see, you know, how broadly stated the goals were in some of those relative to this one, just to, just as a benchmark. Would it be assistive for you all to see a comparative overview of other strategic plans that have been adopted by, say, our peers from the Library Journal survey, those that are bordering us, just to get a sense? Because that was part of my analysis that led us to this document here, just so that you could see what other boards and other communities have been looking at.
So this will be their strategic plan? They're finished?
Yeah.
I think that would be useful.
Since they're all about one page in length, that would be a pretty quick review.
I think that would be helpful, but doing focus groups all the time and talking to people and trying to get their input, I know the clearer it is, and the more in their lingo, the better it is to get their reaction and that they can respond. So that, that's the only point I'm coming to, in terms of...
I think that goes hand in hand, though. You know, I think it's, to me, it's useful to see, like you say, parity, what they've come up with.
No, that's fine, but I'm talking about, but me, my point is completely different. I'm talking about, if I'm sitting here with some residents who have come out, which may be few, we hope more.
Right.
And trying to get their reaction, it needs to be as clear.
Clear, and as...
And as crisp, to me, to get their reaction, in terms of, I don't have to think about it, you know, and they don't have to think about it.
It's obvious, so to speak, yeah.
So that's, that's one place I'm coming from. I don't know if any other...
Yeah, so, I mean, this, we can certainly take this back to the drawing board and to, and to add more clarity, and certainly more language to it. There is, there is a necessary economy to the way that this was drafted. If we're looking for a lot more detail to come out of this document, that will take time to smith this. As you know, we did not have the benefit of a consultant to work on this project, and not a lot of structure to go on, and some other challenges I won't get into. But, you know, that's, this is, this is where we are. And I'm just curious for a bit more feedback about some of the specific language. I've got a brand-new mission and vision statement for you here, so I'd love to hear a little bit more about the actual content of the plan and the aspirations that we've come up with. So, obviously, the format, I get, but anything, can you tell me one thing you like about the plan?
I'll tell you, I like the three things. I like the welcome, I like having welcoming, connected, sustainable. Very, I like that straight, I'm a linear, give me some detail, I like that. Like I said, not my strength, not my, but, you know, just having kind of...
It speaks to you.
It speaks to me, because it's very easy to, it's short and stuff like that. But to Lisa's point, like if I was sitting in a meeting with these people and they were asking these detailed questions, I'd be like, go talk to Lisa. You know, if they had questions about certain, like the responsive thing, I'd have to say, you need to talk to Lisa or Anthony, because I really wouldn't know, I wouldn't have a really good interaction. But I might say, what are you looking, what I'd probably say is, what are you looking for? You know, you have this question, tell me what you don't understand, and I'll get back to you.
I really think the shorter the better. Like, so I wouldn't want to illuminate or try to explain any more than, than what you have here. And, you know, I really appreciate the thought that you've put into it. And I sat with you and, you know, looked over the other strategic plans from our, our peers, I found that you were moving towards something very strong. And I think that we could quibble with words, but it's kind of not helpful, you know? I think that the overall goals are the important areas, which, and you've identified them, and making it measurable is an important area, and as long as we can keep it that way. But you've got to state what it is before you can make it measurable. You know what I mean? You can't, if, if we stick, you know, so breaking it down between the general and then the, and into the three areas, it's like, it's like a cross, it's like a table, and you can look, you read it one way, and then you read it down, and then you see, and, and this could be done with design, and I think it would be a lot, maybe more clear to us that way. But, yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it to get any more elaborate, is my point of view. And I think if we test it and, you know, like get feedback on it, and, you know...
Because the others were all clear. It was just the responsive.
Yeah.
And I just think the fact that you have done that research.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like we're going out of left field to spend the tax papers running.
Right, you didn't just pull it out of first, out of air.
Yeah, but it's based on the surveys, it's based on viewing how set, the shortage of space for staff. And to me, it just, you know, when someone's hearing that, it's more, it's not like they're thinking we're just spending money, because sometimes that's what the perception is, even though they may not know it, even if they see, you know? Whereas most of the stuff has just been to maintain the library in terms of what our expenditures have been. But that was the only one that I didn't get, just to be, the others are clear, but the goal is just, is it clear? Is there anything else you think the library should do? And that would be the...
It's kind of well organized, and you can drill down as much as you want or not. And, you know, I think we have, you know, community members who will really get into it, but most won't. You know, they'll, they'll look at it and say, you know, this looks good, you know? I, I'm kind of comfortable with that, really, you know? But I think touching it out would be a good thing. You know, just not testing it out. You can't really test it, but, you know...
You can't test it, but you get feedback.
Get, get the feedback.
We're required to get feedback from the public, so that's why we're doing it.
Right.
You know, after we've done the plan.
And, you know, it could be enlightening or, or not, but...
But I have to say, I'm just jumping in, having been part of the strategic plan, whatever, you know, years ago, I like the new updated mission, from what Anthony, you said, what do you like? I really like the new mission, vision, values, and goals. I think that really is, is on point, and, and I think that was, that's really well done.
You know, our goal here was to make this plan a little bit more memorable. I would like, I'd actually like for us to be able to memorize the mission statement, and it can just roll off the tongue. And I think that we've, I think we've, we've got that this time. We use the mission statement in press releases, it's usually how we end up closing. It was very important to me that, that this mission statement included the language welcomes everyone. I really feel like, over the course of the last four years, that has always been at the root of any challenge that I've had, is that I've had to say that the library is for everyone. And I don't have anything in my documentation that says that language, but that is the spirit of our charter, it's who we are. So I felt that that needed to be baked into this mission. It did create some challenges for the actual phrasing of the, of the statement to include that, by saying welcomes everyone at the beginning, because then you instantly have to kind of make a pivot on, on that phrase. But I think we were able to smith that to concisely state what we do.
Like you did, in terms of this curiosity, so...
Because I think that all of this really speaks to what libraries are now, they're no longer just books, and no longer anyone shushing people. I was talking to somebody today, and, and, actually, some young people yesterday, and I said, so many things, maker programs, library of things, and that is the curiosity, the exploration, the discovery. I, I think that really is who we are today.
Okay, so you all know the next, you all know the next steps? Are there any other thoughts?
I liked it very much. I really did. I liked the initiatives, I liked how you set out those bullet points. I think, you know, having three for each of the three sections is very important. I think it gives the community something to kind of hold on to and say, well, this is what we want to accomplish in fiscal year 23, 24. I enjoyed reading it. I, you know, I guess I didn't maybe critically analyze every word in it, like I might in, like a service agreement. I saw this more as broad and, not lofty, that's the wrong word, but just like inspiring. Like, it's, it's, I think a strategic plan needs to be both inspiring, but also have concrete goals, and I felt like this document showed that. So, you know, I, I didn't look at it like you might analyze something word for word, but I, I enjoyed reading it, and I thought it was straightforward.
For, you know, and I think for, some of the things that I'm hearing tonight, thank you, Mary Ann, I think some of the things that I've heard tonight really relate to how broad a plan can be, that, that there's a lot of hidden bullet points in here, that there's not a lot of specificity. I think we can go to great lengths to, to show you where the trees are in each of these forests. That's kind of how I keep talking about it to the staff, because a lot of us are tree people. And, you know, it's hard to find your tree in some of these forests, but they're, they're actually, they're all there, I think, you know, as we kind of drill down. But when you look at it on the surface, you know, it, it may be hard to determine what some of these things, well, what actually is, is baked into that? What does that mean? Like, you know, this local history thing, what are we talking about there? A couple of them are a little bit more specific, when we're talking about on the sustainable future, the initiatives that we have for the coming fiscal year. You may recall when we talked in this last budget cycle in 22, 23, there were a few capital projects that we talked about, and they're actually listed in here again, because we weren't able to accomplish them yet this, this fiscal year. And that relates to the building automation system, the telephone system replacement project, that's the network communications piece, and the replacement of our desktop computers. We've got 100 computers that are getting near their end of life, and that's going to be a big expenditure for us from our capital fund, so we need to make sure that we reflect that. Those are the types of things that, you know, are the hidden bullet points within each of these initiatives. We're certainly going to have more discussion of all of those items at this level and in the reporting that we do. Would it be assistive to have an accompanying document that goes along with this, that articulates examples of what each of these things mean? That kind of spells it out a little bit more? Or does this kind of stand on its own, and once it starts getting filled in with the reporting, it'll start to make a little bit more sense?
I view this as a map, you know? And then as you keep going through, you're winding down the different streets on the map, but it's not the whole big picture. At least, that's how I interpret it. map, but it's not the whole big picture, at least that's how I interpret it. And it should also be able to be changed, you know? I, I don't view this as something that's stagnant. Like, this is, again, a map of where we're going, not necessarily the only direction we can go. But I'm also very new to, to strategic plans, so.
Yeah, some of us are, especially doing it internally.
Yeah.
But generally, you've got the flexibility, to me, the outcomes and priorities stay with the strategic plan. The initiatives are where you do the, you actually implement those things, but the overall overarching goal, I think we need to agree on for, I don't know, is it three years? How long is this plan going to be on?
Through fiscal year '27, so four years.
Four years, so, yeah. But the overarching goal statement, how do you implement it?
Unless, and forgive me if I'm wrong, unless all of a sudden you look at that goal and you say, our community no longer needs that, our community no longer wants that. Or you have something like the pandemic, which upends everything, and then your strategic plan vastly shifts, you're going down a different street on this map.
Taking the alternate route.
You're taking an alternate route. You're taking local instead of expressway.
But your values would not change. I mean, the value won't change in the gold areas.
Correct.
Because if you look at, well, but where you get the change would be the initiatives, which are just stated for the year, the current year.
The, the prior plan, each one of the goals started with, by first quarter 2018, we're going to do this thing, you know? They were SMART goals, you know, and they were specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, timely, whatever that, that acronym is for SMART. They were phrased that way. But you're right, it didn't give us a lot of flexibility, and it was aspirational in the time that it was written, and couldn't anticipate something like the pandemic coming. We did hold fast to those goals, but some of those timeframes needed to, you know, they needed to evolve with the plan. But I think by, you know, targeting specific initiatives fiscal year by fiscal year, we allow this thing to be a little bit more fluid and to grow with us, while still, while still maintaining those values.
I also think it's very up to date and, and future directed, you know, in terms of mentioning sustainability and the welcoming environment and serving the entire community. I mean, the library's always served the entire community, but, but sometimes people didn't recognize it. I mean, I think that's always kind of a risk, like when, when people, you know, complain, not that anyone complains about the budget anymore, but like, you know, just like the, like if they look at something and like, well, you know, I never go to these programs, you know, like it, that's not for me, you know, I don't have kids anymore, or I don't, you blah, blah, blah. And, but just the emphasis that this is the community, you know, reflects everybody in the community, and, you know, I, I think it really needs to be out there, and, you know, the diversity issue really needs to be out there. And, you know, I think this is, you know, well done, along those lines, yeah.
Is there, is there any other discussion? Okay, even so, we will have the meetings in the next three weeks. Okay, at this time, move this closer, we're going to establish the nominating committee, and trustee Nealon and Cox will serve as the nominating committee, because as president, I can appoint them. And their goal will be, and thank you for agreeing to serve, and their goal will basically be to recruit and prepare a slate of the following officers for the board for the next election for spring 2025, and it goes through then. And the offices that they will be looking at are the president, the vice president, secretary, and treasurer, and the slate will be presented at the Tuesday, May 16th regular meeting, following the administration of the Oof of Office for the newly elected trustees. Okay, and so thank you for serving, and if you've got any questions, or if you'd like to volunteer, please feel free to give them a call, or else they will be calling you. Thank you. We're going to turn it over to trustee Summer to talk about the finance committee meeting.
I'm not prepared to say much about it, we're having a finance committee meeting. I'll turn this over to Director Austin, because I think he might have the date picked out.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so it is, it's budget time, so we're in the process of drafting our budget for fiscal year 2324, and we have a finance committee that conducts that, that initial review of the draft budget for the year that begins in July 1. And the committee members for the finance committee are, our treasurer is the chair, trustee Summer, along with trustees Fishman, O'Keefe, and Riddle, and trustee McDonald as board president is an ex officio member. We conducted a doodle poll for people's availability for this meeting, and we found a date that most people can attend, and that is Wednesday, May 10th at 1:00 PM here in the auditorium. So we will get that posted on the website as our next finance committee meeting, and get our notices posted about that. We have also invited our trustees-elect to attend that meeting, and they both confirmed that they're able to attend, so that's great. Concurrent with that meeting, as we did in the election cycle in '21, we had, I believe, Mary Ann Trish and Tracy all attended a pre-finance committee meeting where we did a deep dive into the library's finances, and we're, we intend to conduct that same process at the beginning of this meeting as well. So we'll, we'll be talking more about how we can schedule that. But like I said, we'll do the, we'll do the draft budget at that meeting. We typically meet two or three times outside of the regular meetings. The budget is typically approved at the June meeting, so we will have another full review at the May 16th meeting, following this initial finance committee meeting, and then we'll do further refinement, likely with another meeting in late May or early June, before we do the adoption of the budget in June. Okay?
Okay, thank you. And now, it's time for the director's report.
Okay. I will keep my remarks a bit more brief this evening. We got a nice long report for you this evening, so let me know if you've got any questions in there. But I'll start by saying, I did summarize our staff day at the last one, and I provided a photo summary of the day with all the sessions represented. Staff took a number of pictures of staff day, and we also hired a photographer to take headshots for our upcoming first ever staff directory, and they also took a group shot of our team, and that was featured at the top of my report this month. So check it out, we got a lovely team. I wanted to mention too, you'll see in the very last pictures that are appended to my report, there's, we had an ASL program that we did here, American Sign Language in this room. And one of our staff members is deaf, and I think they really felt more included in this event, not only by the fact that we always bring interpreters that come to help or participate in the, in the programs that we do, but also that there was a resounding amount of support within this room by those who elected to stay and to learn a bit of library-centric ASL. In addition to that, our shelving and welcome desk manager, Pat C. Devono, who oversees the department where this individual works, along with our full-time shelve, Mary Dorman, attended a Serving Deaf Patrons in the Library webinar in late March, and they are helping to carry the, the learnings that they've taken from these webinars and the trainings that they're doing back out to our teams as well. So we're all taking an effort to learn a little bit more so that we can be more inclusive as just part of our initiatives. Speaking of the shelving team, getting into some more details of the report, the shelving team has been doing some shifting here on the lower level to make our collections more accessible, and that includes an initiative to get all the books off what we refer to as the bottom shelf, which I don't believe is a shelf. It's part of the, the bottom structure of the shelving unit. So in an effort to get things off the floor where it's hard to shelve them, and also for, harder for patrons to find them, we are moving the shelves up, and we are moving the top shelves down. So we're kind of making, to make things a little bit more at eye level for folks. And one of the advantages of this is that we're also able to open up some shelves for more marketing and display of the collections. So to get an idea for that, if you want to buzz over after the meeting and take a walk through the lower level, you'll see particularly in the 700s, where we've got a lot of art books, we've moved some shelves around in there, and it looks very attractive. So the goal is to try to do that across the entire collection. We're also concurrently doing this in the large type area right now, up on the first floor. Speaking of collections, we added a MetaQuest 2VR headset to the Library of Things this month. We're really excited about a lot of the, the Library of Things stuff that we're doing, but we've gotten very ambitious with that, with that collection, and we've pretty much spent out the budget for Library of Things for the year. So that may be the last wild and crazy new item that we add to that collection for a little while, but big aspirations for it in the next fiscal year. That website is up to date and looks really sharp, so check it out and see all the cool things that we've got there. Also in digital and Maker Services, manager Lauren Kelly is analyzing our electronic subscriptions for our fiscal year 2324 renewals. As you know, they've been tracking all of the circulation and usage data on those databases so that we can make more informed decisions. We've got a cost per use analysis, and that's actually included in the statistics that are appended to my report, and that will inform how we move forward with some of those resources. One of our popular resources, Press Reader, which includes over 7,000 online newspapers and magazines, that's right, you can read today's local newspapers from across the nation on this document, or on this platform, rather, Press Reader, it's really cool, has gobbled up The Economist, which used to be carried by Overdrive, and that was one of our most popular e-magazines. So we are promoting the use of The Economist this month in April as being part of Press Reader, so I just wanted folks to be aware of that addition to that other really cool resource.
Do you, how do you access Press Reader? Is it through an app or through the?
They've got a website, they have an app, and we have a login, you can go straight from our website to get to Press Reader. Press Reader also, I believe, can recognize our IP range, so if you're within Wilmett Library, it can recognize that you're here and that we're a subscriber, and should immediately take you right into the interface without needing to log in.
You can log in from home.
You can log in from home as well.
This is so fabulous. Do, how much do we promote?
We're working on our marketing and promotion of some of these really amazing resources that we have that are digital. It's harder to market those things. You may recall, pre-pandemic, we had a laptop that was in the periodical room, that was dedicated specifically to Press Reader. It didn't have a lot of signage on it that said, hey, come learn about Press Reader. So we're thinking about how we might be able to better promote some of these resources. One of the angles with that is, collection by collection, some of our more specialized librarians, like say, John Amundson, our business librarian, has been doing more to promote some of these resources specifically to the communities that he serves, in advertising these programs through the chamber and so on. I'm sure that Gillian's going to be able to do that now a bit more in her relationship with being the senior services librarian, beginning on May 1, as well as our teen librarian connecting more with our, our teen students, et cetera, et cetera. So we're trying to reach more of the affinity groups that would be interested in these in one-on-one. The, the word-of-mouth marketing seems to do a little bit better than just having a bit of passive promotion about the program. It doesn't invite you to go into it, but if you're holding a tablet in your hand, and you can just log right into it and show people how easy it is to use it, I think we've got much more success with, with gaining actual uses from those, rather than, oh, that's neat, I'll check it out someday, and then people really don't.
I just have one question, which you jumped in. What's the most circulated item in the, of things?
Oh goodness. Well, I can tell you, I think the most popular items are our hotspots, the Wi-Fi hotspots. But I, I would have to get back to you about the actual item that is the most popular one. That one we have the most copies of, or the, the most devices of. We actually had to add more of those to meet demand.
And didn't I read for Library of Things, the sewing machine has now been added?
That's right.
Okay, great.
So all kinds of cool stuff.
Yeah, we talked about it, yeah. Thanks to Lanayn, right.
So question, wouldn't, because I've been on three months of GoPro waitlist, and there's six people, so what's a timeframe that somebody can use the Library of Things? Because I think it becomes an issue with some of the other.
Right.
Certain items.
So we, we try to have a two-to-one ratio on our, on all of our items, so that people don't have to wait, because we have recognized that when you got to wait for something, sometimes you just give up, and we don't want that to happen. So customer service is really giving the people what they want. So we did recently adjust the loan rules for the Library of Things collection. It's now, that collection now circulates for two weeks. We collected a lot of data about this before we made that decision, historically, it was three weeks. A number of these items were, were being returned early, actually, after two weeks. So we thought, oh, well, the majority of these things are only having a utility for a certain specific period of time. You use the thing, you may be really interested in it, oh, this is great, I want to get one of my own. Or it's something that's just for a specific project, like it's the kilowatt meter or something, you want to analyze the use of which objects in your house are draining the most energy, so you plug your things into it and find that out, you've conducted your project, you're done with your project, you return the thing. A VR headset might be a little bit more alluring, and you might want to hang on to that. A Nintendo Switch, you might want to play the game a little bit more, but it might also compel you to get your own. So the loan rule changed, so that's one of the ways. But it's true, the hotspots were way in demand, and we couldn't keep up with the demand for those, so we had to add more items. And that's really, you know, again, like I said, the two-to-one ratio is kind of what we're targeting there.
Because I've been on three months for the GoPro.
All right.
She's bitter about it.
Duly noted.
That's okay, I don't need it.
So you'll note in the, the technical services statistics that we are super busy up there with adding all kinds of new items to the collection and keeping up with collection maintenance, specifically the weeding that continues in adult and youth services. So there's a lot of activity that's going on related to the collections, and this is a super busy time of the year, as a lot of publishing takes place around summer in anticipation of beach time. Circulation, I shared with you all via email, but I wanted to let everyone know here this evening that we received notice this month that Kim Hegland has announced that she will be leaving her circulation manager position, actually, Friday is her last day. Kim has, is taking a position with progressive responsibilities as the circulation manager at the Northbrook Public Library, where she's going to manage a larger team. She started with us right in the heart of the pandemic in October of 2020, and during her time, she has made considerable improvements to the library, and we're, we're really going to miss her. She was instrumental in our RFID project in bringing on the new checkout stations that currently garner 60% of our circulation. She's been really innovative, she helped us with our new wrapped open holds, the update of our, our service desk equipment, a lot of nuance related to all the RFID equipment, including the update of the automated material handling system, and the implementation of the, the lockers that we launched back in February. She worked very closely with me when we all reviewed the circulation policy a year ago, and she's also been a part of these periodic reveals, reviews of the loan rules, and the one that we just talked about. She's a very collaborative member of our Library of Things committee, the past committee for CCS, and obviously, our leadership team. She was very creative, and we're sorry to see her go. We posted her position, and we're in the process of recruitment, and we hope to have that position hired by the end of this fiscal year, so that we can continue on, but we wish Kim all the best in her venture. Related to circulation, we wanted to report that March 2023 is the closest that we've come to our pre-pandemic physical circulation statistics for the first time. We were just 700 items shy of our March 2019 circulation. We topped 60,000 circs for physical materials, and that's really incredible. So we are thrilled, we are back, things are clipping along, door counts are up, usage is, is peaking, so we're thrilled. The lockers that I just mentioned a second ago, usage is catching on there, you'll see our statistics for that. You may have noted that about 10% of the items that landed in the locker went unclaimed, something that we're trending, we're studying the trending on, but I, I do want to note that 12% of the items that people place on hold inside the building go unclaimed. So actually, people are motivated more to pick up the stuff outside, ever so slightly, than they are indoors, for what it's worth. We'll track data. 2%.
So what percentage capacity are you using the lockers, would you say?
Capacity?
Yeah.
Like how many of the lockers are filled at a given moment?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know that figure at this point.
Okay, but you've got.
We've got room to grow. It's meeting demand. We don't need to add another bank of lockers just yet.
I'll just say that when you reserve a book, or you put a hold on a book, you do have to remember to look at the dropdown. It changed, it, it's not like you could, can you have it set as a, you can't have it set.
The default.
Default, thank you. No, okay. So I think that's.
Yep.
As a reminder.
It is, but, you know, the other piece too is, you know, there's, there's nearly 30 members. of the CCS system, and you can place holds and pick them up at any one of those libraries, and those libraries also may have lockers, may have branches. So there's a lot of options in that dropdown menu, and you could situationally have other reasons why you might want to do it. By and large, most people want to pick up here. But we can look at, we can look at the settings and the defaults. As you know, from our strategic plan, one of our goals is to improve accessibility, and we have a specific initiative in fiscal year 2324 to improve access to the collections via the website and app. And one of the ways that we think that we can improve this, and perhaps set a default for folks, so that remembers what your preference is, is to target that in the app. So it is one of the things that's baked into that initiative in the strategic plan. All right, anything else about circulation? So this, March was the official kickoff month for this year's One Book Season. One Book Everyone Reads is our annual signature partner event with our sponsor, the Friends of the Wilmatt Public Library, and we encourage everyone in our community to read the same book and to come together for a series of supporting programs and events. This Sunday, over 14,000 subscribers to our email list received an invite to attend a number of our programs, where we kicked off a lot of One Book Everyone Reads programs this week, including an introduction to performance art last night, Conquer College Planning, not related to One Book, sorry, was also last night. We had a book discussion about our title, Now Is Not the Time to Panic by Kevin Wilson, scheduled for tomorrow evening with teens and adults right here in the auditorium. We have a Teen Zine Workshop next Monday, another book discussion next Wednesday, Make Your Own Mini Masterpiece on Wednesday afternoon for kids, teens, and adults here in the auditorium. And everything is going to build up to our conversation with Kevin Wilson and our facilitator, Allison Cuddy, on Thursday, May 11, 7 to 8, online. All the programs are in our new newsletter, which just landed in homes in late March. You should all have that. And our communications, youth services, and adult services teams have all been very active in getting the word out about the events that are going on related to this. We've got a lot more promotion and marketing that we're doing inside the building this year. This is really a work of creative fiction that's about creativity, and we're kind of using that as our lens to try to create a little bit more interest in it. So stay tuned for some interesting ways of promoting this series from inside the library. And as always, thanks to the Friends for their strong and continued support of this annual event. Specific to the departments and adults, on International Women's Day, the library hosted a local attorney and legal scholar, Michelle Thorne, and she discussed the history and future of the Equal Rights Amendment. It was a partnership that we did with the League of Women Voters of Wilmatt and the Village of Wilmatt Human Relations Commission. Commissioner Sathi Mukherjee and co-president of the League and Sullivan both gave opening remarks for that event. In March, John Amundson launched our first Strictly Business Toolbox, which is a series of virtual lunch hour programs that feature patron-facing demonstrations of the library's newest business e-resources. I mentioned that as one of the methods that we're trying to use to reach audiences there with the goal to increase usage of those powerful tools. We had a really great patron story that took place in the local history room this past month. Descendants of the original Wilmatt family, cousins traveled from out of state to visit the local history room, and a couple of other historical landmarks in Wilmatt to learn more about their Wilmatt heritage and the history of their family in Wilmatt. So that was really fascinating. Krista, our teen librarian, is coordinating with a number of new Trier students who are working on service projects, and she's extra busy with that right now. She also presented a panel on tabletop role-playing games at the C2E2 Chicago Comics and Entertainment Expo. As you may know, her Dungeons and Dragons program is pretty popular and has garnered a lot of interest, and so she was speaking to a very interested group about that as part of a panel. In youth services, we had strong programming this past month. Despite a short storytime break during spring break, our attendance was up, due in large part to the massive Wiggleworm parties that we had here in the auditorium. That's done through the Old Town School of Folk Music. We had over 120 attendees at each of those programs, so we were a buzzing hive of activity on those days. Our March Let's Learn Together Family Workshop was co-presented with Crystal Elliott O'Connor. She has 30-plus years in early childhood education and family support, and developed a unique set of skills and passions for which she works today as a consultant, and she shared her experience with us, partnering to increase racial awareness and create a critical mass of like-minded folks working towards liberty and justice in our society. Related to that initiative, our librarians Sarah Jo Zaharaco and Krista Hutley also created some social stories for teens and children on our website. We have an accessibility page on our website that talks about the services that we extend to others to better access the library. Social Stories, which were developed by educator Carol Gray, are learning tools that are developed to share information with individuals with autism, but with visual preparation that they provide that can be helpful to many people. Basically, what the visual stories do is they tell you what you can expect when you come to the library with pictures. So I encourage you to go to our page, click through to that link, wilmattlibrary.info/servicesaccessibility, and just see how you can prepare someone to come to the library. It's really charming. In digital and maker services this month, in March, DMS staff conducted 35 one-on-one help interactions in the tech center. That's pretty awesome, a very, very specialized service. Two of our staff members, Ethan and Finn, worked together to create and research audio cassette digitization options to enhance the digitization suite that we're offering there. As you know, we've had a lot of interest in analog-to-digital conversion. We had 13 people in March come in and digitize their VHS tapes. That's a lot of time actually invested, because you have to sit there in real time with this equipment and just kind of let it run its course. We're seeing a lot of interest in these resources that we're offering, so.
You can check it out, too. Isn't there one you can check out?
I don't, yeah, there is? Sweet.
We've used it.
Cool.
Yeah, you have to have your own VCR, but, yeah, we've done.
Cool.
It's great.
I did not know that. Great. And then one of the other things that we're working on developing right now is a Minecraft video game club for elementary and middle school aged children, so that's something that we're also trying to develop in DMS. Communications and Events had some programs this month that were really big draws, including our opera and armchair travel programs. And our music event for the month was Sunday, March 19, and we had more than muses, female composers through history, with the Sapphire Woodwind Quintet had a concert that was attended by 46 patrons. And as I mentioned earlier in that newsletter, we were, used to send out our weekly events emails on Mondays, but since moving to Sundays, we've actually seen more people opening those emails, and we've actually seen anecdotally more participation in those events, since we've been getting it out into homes one day earlier. So that small tweak is having a real positive impact. I will leave my report there. Do you have any questions or comments for me from the rest of my report?
My only comment was, I loved that Marcos did an impromptu storytime.
Yeah.
I thought that's just, what a great show of who he is and recognizing a situation and just, I thought that was wonderful.
With a lot of the activity, particularly during the spring break week, we had, we had a lot of kids in the building. And it got a little bit noisy, had a lot of running going around, and that was, that was an opportunity. And Marcos saw that, and he seized it, and he used one of our social stories as the format for his program. And we've gotten a lot of mileage out of that picture so far, too. We'll share that a bit more, too.
I have a question. Polling place on April 4.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
I don't have statistical data to support that, although the door counts will tell me a bit more, so I'll know a little bit more to share about that with you. But yes, on April 4, we were, we were a polling place for two precincts in Wilmatt, went off without a hitch, started early, got everything set up, and they were out of here by 8 o'clock that night, so it really, it was a success. If we needed to do it again, we proved that we can do it. Locally broader, we know that Wilmatt, I think, had an 18% rate, which, hey, it's better than some neighboring communities. Still not, still not the type of participation that we're looking for, but, you know, we did, I think we did notice that it was a lot busier in here that day, and the welcome desk noted that were a lot of folks that came in and said, oh, I haven't been in the library for a while. So we were really happy to introduce the library to folks that day. All right, anything, anything else?
Is John recording his business? Because he gives great information, and I know that when he was doing with the chamber, he could not record it. I'm just wondering, is he able to record in terms of how you use some of the data so that you can access it?
Yeah, I think, you know, that's part of our ideas for promoting these services more, yeah. All right, that concludes my report.
We now go to the committee reports.
Hello.
Trustee Nealon, ILA or Rails updates?
Well, the ILA, a Write to Read Day coming up on April 24, right? Getting emails about that already. They have some good suggestions if you're, if you want to take a look at it, just on the ILA site, for how to get involved, if your community needs a little bit of a, needs your input on some of the challenges that they're meeting with challenges to books and materials, but it's interesting. Anything on that?
You have more information.
You have more.
I got a little bit. So the, for in ILA, the Library Trustee Forum hosted a number of spring workshops. Trustee Summer attended the April 1 Library Finance for Trustees Training Workshop.
I would have suggested, if I'd known how basic it was, that the new trustees taken. It was very, very basic. It would have been very helpful for the new upcoming, but.
Was it recorded or is it accessible?
Probably, probably, but I'm not sure if they'd have access to it. It's very basic. I think that what we do, we can do better, yes.
It'd be more specific.
Yes, exactly. So it's fine.
Thank you, thank you for attending. I'm planning to attend the last of the, of the three programmings that they're doing this spring. It's their May 13, which is a Saturday, a meeting of the Kleintown Public Library, an inside look at how to run an efficient and effective library board meeting. Kleintown is a joke, is put on by attorneys Kleintorpe and Jenkins, who are going to talk a little bit more about how to meet the procedures related to Robert's Rules, the Open Meetings Act, and the Freedom of Information Act, et cetera, et cetera. Again, I think a basic overview. I will provide more information to you all from what I learned from that event. We are also going to be conducting a very similar type of program in this very room on May 2 for all newly elected officials in our community, the Village of Wilmatt, the school districts, Park District Library, and Township, and potentially members of the high school, but I'm not sure if they're going to be joining us. They've got their own rigorous onboarding plan as well. But basically, what we've got is, each of the executive leaders of those organizations will make a brief presentation about what we do, how we govern, the ways in which we serve, and then we have certified parliamentarian Nancy Sylvester will be doing her signature program about how to be an effective trustee through Robert's Rules, will lead us through the Open Meetings Act, FOIA, et cetera. So we're excited for that. It's a four-hour program, we'll have a break for lunch. So that's Tuesday, May 2.
I love that they're doing everybody together.
Yeah, and right before we all get sworn in, so that's good. Speaking of elections and new folks, ILA is electing its new trust, its new Board of Trustees. So you can vote if you're an ILA member. I'm an individual member, so I voted there. I can't vote on behalf of the institution, but if you're individual members, I encourage you to take a look at that and participate. ILA is also going to be hosting the Reaching Forward Conference. It's an annual professional development conference for paraprofessionals, and that is always in Rosemont this year on May 5. And so we've got some staff that are going to be attending that event. And that's it for ILA. I've got some Rails stuff, too, unless you've got something for Rails. All right, I'll be brief about Rails. Rails did not receive enough nominations for their three open public library trustee seats. So if you are at all interested in not only serving on the Wilmatt Public Library Board, but would like to represent public libraries on the Rails Board, they are accepting nominations through this Friday, the 21st. So if you need help, you need an L2 account to log in. I think most of you have an L2 account, but if you are interested, let me know, and I can help get you set up with that. There are 11 board meetings a year, they say, so that, just to give you an idea, and they typically are done via video conference. And that is all I have for my Rails update. Oh, oh, and their new director, Monica Harris, is making a tour of library land, going to a number of libraries for visits. I think she's going to be in our geographic area eventually, but the closest one that she has coming up to us is May 10 in Algonquin, but it happens at the exact same moment that we are in this room for the Finance Committee meeting for our budget review, so I will not be participating. Okay, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Turn it over to trustee Nealon for an update on the Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee.
I have, some trustees were curious about which of the nine agencies were invited to the intergovernmental meeting that kicked off the study on mental health as a topic. So I went ahead and printed out the list of the nine agencies and the seven government bodies, one of us being part of that as well. And so here is the list. It includes the agencies are Compass Health Center, Erica's Lighthouse, Family Service Center of Wilmatt, Glenview, Northbrook, Kenilworth, Haven Youth and Family Services, the Jocelyn Center, Thresholds, the Warming House Youth Center, Willow House, and Youth Services of Glenview, Northbrook. Government bodies were Avoca School District 37, Wilmatt School District 39, Nutria High School, Nutria Township, Wilmatt Park District, the Wilmatt Public Library, and the Village of Wilmatt. So that's a broad group of participants in this effort.
Great.
So it's just so you have it handy, these handouts is a brief description of each entity and what they are adding or hope to add. Well, that's it. There's no more meeting scheduled right now, down the road, you know, a couple months away.
Okay, thank you. Information items, you've seen the comments in the purple folder, and we've had quite a few, some of them around noise, and also who's eating what, as well as the one that we always get in terms of the arrangement of foreign films, which we'll be working on as you.
We're working on, since we updated our collection policy, we're in the process of developing the steps that we're going to take to make the international film collection more accessible to folks. And we're planning to genrefy the DVD collections, so it'll be easier to find comedies, dramas, action, horror, mystery, all those things, so we'll divide that stuff up.
Okay, thank you. And we, four seats for the seven-member WPLD Board of Trustees were on the local ballot. On Tuesday, April 4, the consolidated election, all four candidates were elected to the office in the uncontested election and will serve four-year terms expiring April 2027, and the trustees will be sworn in to office at the Tuesday, May 16, regular meeting. And so two of our new trustees are here, John Fishman, as well as Carol. Welcome. And thanks for coming.
We've got a, we got a full meeting on, on May 16. We've got, we've got a few actions that we're going to be taking in addition to swearing in our new trustees and seating our new officers, which the nominating committee is going to do. We also have, in order to be in compliance with the Decennial Committee on Local Government Efficiency Act, we will be holding our first convenience of that meeting as part of that meeting there. So, as well as having the first regular meeting review of the draft budget. So we're, we're in for, we're in for some business that evening. I also wanted to let you know, too, that we have hired a photographer who is going to take new headshots of our new board, and they're going to be here on that Tuesday, the 16th, immediately prior to the meeting. the 16th, immediately prior to the meeting. So I'm going to ask you all to come a little bit early for the meeting, not only for individual headshots that we'll put up on the website, but also for a group shot of everyone that we could potentially use for other purposes. So it would be great to have that.
It's all polished.
So we've already discussed One Book Everyone Reads and so is there any new business? Okay, being done. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that the board adjourn this meeting at 8:17.
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned at 8:17. Thank you.
Thank you all.